Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings, TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, December 15th, 2008, and City Council is meeting in the last regularly scheduled session of the year. We do have a quorum with all six members of council present, and tonight we do have with us some guests that we are very pleased and proud to have with us, and that is troop 53 of our local Boy Scouts. So, guys, welcome, we're glad to have you with us. Tonight, as you look at our agenda, usually there are three different readings that we take things through. The first group of ordinances that we go through are things that are up for the third reading, and usually they are up for adoption. The person that has sponsored that ordinance will move for adoption, will get a second usually, and then there will be a discussion on what the merits of that ordinance is, and then if there are four people to vote in favor of it, that ordinance has been adopted. This evening, there are no ordinances up for second reading. Now, usually, there are, and during second reading, unless it's a controversial thing or we found some reason that we need to amend it, or table it, or it has elicited some real discussion from the community, we usually do not have much discussion about it at second reading, it is just yet one more time that we read things so that the community is aware of what we are doing. And then ordinances that are up for first reading, which you will see as ordinance 134 on, and then a resolution, are ordinances that are being introduced tonight, and usually we try, council rules provide that we read things three different times, so there's usually a six-week period that things are up for discussion, and the reason that we do that is to allow people at home that watch us on TV, the press that report on what we do, to give people an opportunity to offer input and objections to what we do. So usually, most things go to a committee, then they are read three different times, and then they are adopted, and the reason for that is to offer public input and objections to what we do. So as you look at the agenda, that's how we do our work here, to a certain extent. Under communications, we do have a couple of other things. One is tonight, and in my 19 years of coming to this room, I don't think I ever remember Debbie Walker being sick, and Debbie Walker is not with us tonight because she does feel ill. One of the things that we will need to do before we can proceed with any other business is to appoint a temporary member, well, a temporary clerk of council, and in discussions earlier, senior member of council, Member Bain, said that she would be willing to do it if I can have a motion, a second, and we can appoint her.
Second?
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Objection? Member of council move over here. The problem with that is, you have to sit next to me.
Yes, no problem.
Unfortunately, a lot of the things that we need to go through have been stacked up for you, and we'll take care of businesses as it comes. Member Nysley, I believe there's some communication you wish to share.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to let council members in the community know of a funding opportunity that we have coming available through the Ohio Department of Transportation. Jessica Stroh, who is the Employment and Economic Development Director at the Hocking-Athens Perry Community Action, was contacted by the Department of Transportation to see if there might be interest in what's called a mobility manager, and that's someone who, as I understand it, could perhaps help us with coordinating city and county transportation, and a kind of planner. And the grant would be due on January 16th. HAPCAP is interested in submitting it, they have attended two of our Transportation Advisory Committee meetings to inform us about this, and she did share with me a preliminary budget. It would be approximately a $75,000 grant, as I understand, it would also be available for multiple years of funding if we, obviously, successfully carry through the terms of the grant. There would be, with that, a need to commit some money towards cash cost share to the project, as well as in-kind cost share. And so Jessica has approached the city and the county and several other nonprofit organizations to let them know of this opportunity, but also to ask if it would be a possibility to share in that cash cost share. So she has approached the city, she's also approached the county commissioners, and I know our Transportation Advisory Committee thinks that this would be a tremendous opportunity for the community to have a professional person in place to help us coordinate things. So I'll be bringing that back to you in January, but just wanted to alert you to that now, and I can share further documents with you as they're available.
Other comments from council members? Thank you, Member Nysley. I have, by our newly-appointed clerk of council, been handed a reminder that tomorrow at noon at Louis Louis's Restaurant, City Council will be having lunch with President McDavis of Ohio University. So since that would constitute a quorum of council, that also makes it a public meeting that anyone and members of the press are more than welcome to attend.
Yes. It's not between now and the first of February.
Okay, yeah, I should have read this before. This is from the Division of Liquor Control, Ohio Department of Commerce, and a letter that the clerk of council has in receipt of. The purpose of this letter is to notify you that all permits to sell alcoholic beverages in your political subdivision will expire on February 1, 2009. In order to maintain permit privileges, every permit holder must file a renewal application. And I think that does give everyone an opportunity to make objections to any permit renewal or any new permits that are being handed out.
Bill?
Yes.
Is there a deadline when that has to be?
I don't know.
Asking for a hearing.
Okay, I did not really want to read the whole thing, but, yeah, the bold part I will. The resolution and chief legal officer statement must be addressed to the Division of Liquor Control, Attention, Legal Section 6606, Tussing Road, Post Office Box 4005, Reynoldsburg, 43068, and postmark no later than January 2nd, 2009.
Thank you.
So we do not have a lot of time for this, if there is any objections that anyone wishes to raise.
Mine for next year.
No, we sure will. Okay, is there any other communications any members of council wishes to share? Members hands.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the auditor's reports for October and November. We have received those, and we need to move to accept them. I move to accept them. We need to vote on it.
Motion and second, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion has been adopted, and the reports have been accepted. Any other communications? Reports and communications from other elected officials, Mayor Wile.
The only communication I really have, well, I guess you probably have some communications coming about the Roosevelt.
Oh, yes.
Towne Towne. Okay. And again, pretty much what you saw in the paper was verbatim what I sent an email out Friday to the Neighborhood Association Executive Meeting, concerning, of course, the, how we started, the whole process of our telephone system, et cetera, et cetera. The other communication I have is, I met with some pastors last week of various denominations. They gave me a letter, I think they gave you as well a letter.
Yeah, I was going to mention that one yet, but.
You forgot.
Go ahead.
Okay. I won't read the whole thing, but I'll read some portions of it. Basically, it's addressed to myself and present bias. It says, "We are writers, concerned leaders of the faith community in Athens about the great moral issue that challenges all of us, including you, to define the fabric of the community." Essentially, the gist of it is that there's a homeless problem here. Last year, as you know, to sum up the next three paragraphs, Good Works was trying to get an extension on their Timothy House, they went through the zoning board of appeals, and they were denied. But as pointed out here, the need has gotten worse, and they, the letter also is, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, says, "This is not Good Works issue, it is a community issue for the entire city of Athens. How this community treats those desperate need defines who we are. Good Works is simply a nonprofit organization that has for 28 years helped the community respond to those, among these problems, are those among us who are acutely homeless." What essentially is asking is that we might change some of the laws. I think the next two paragraphs down, it also points out, "Within the last couple of years, the city adopted a comprehensive plan. To our knowledge, the plan does not include a section to address poverty, including homelessness." We are asking you to address that oversight. As our elected leaders, your response to this crisis will define who we are as community. Should the area around Timothy House be rezoned?" Again, coming back to the rezoning of that. "Should the definition of permitted use as an existing zone be amended to permit a homeless shelter?" In parentheses, "To our knowledge, the existing zoning code doesn't specifically refer to homeless shelters. For years, Good Works has been shoehorned into the definition of either boarding house or hotel." Again, they, as you know, the economy is such, that it could be a problem. It's assigned by 18 different congregations, I guess is the term. I'll, the discussion I had with these three of them, this is last week, I really was asking more questions about what is being done from their point of view as well. They do have, you know, food kitchens, food pantries that are occurring, they're covering different aspects of it. I'm aware that the Athens Housing, Athens County Housing Coalition is having a scheduled survey of homeless, this will be on January 27th, point-time homeless street count. I would suggest that, I suggested to the congregations to get involved so we can find out the degree of our problem, since we don't really have a clear understanding of it. But as I say, I mentioned that, I also brought up the fact that this is one of the issues that could be brought up at the town hall meeting, the 29th of January, in terms of the comprehensive plan, whether something in there needs to be adjusted, or benchmarks, or at least criteria of this should be put in place, or at least addressed. And as I say, I'll give, I think you can get copies of the letter if you have questions about it.
Mayor Wile, one of the things that I did today, we, I had some emails going back and forth with Keith Wasserman, and I had shared with him that it was my intention to turn this over to our Planning and Development Committee to follow the process, because literally, we may need to make a request to the Planning Commission to, you know, the usual, which I would see as the only route to go at this point, from what I can see in their letter that they, the action they want us to take. So shortly after the first of the year, I would anticipate that the first meeting of the Planning and Development Committee, with hopefully its new chair in place, will address at least what City Council can do with this.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I communicated with the Board of Zoning Appeals when this came before them, and if, if I'm remembering it correctly, the issue was that they wanted to connect two houses that are on two separate lots, so I don't know if it was a zoning problem so much as a problem of two structures on two lots maybe becoming one, so it may be something that could be handled by replating.
As, oh, good point.
So that it was just one structure.
But as Minister Gaul said, he felt that the decision that was reached was exactly the correct decision that had to be reached under what the way that the law is today, and he felt that the law would need to be changed for them to be able to obtain what they wanted to do. So, I don't know. I just think we need to send it on to committee for the next step. Yes, Mayor Wile?
And as I said, the question I had was, what are the exact needs? What are we talking about? I mean, we could say, let's build a larger homeless shelter, but we don't know, you know, will that fit the need? Probably not, and at what level? And that's the question, I have no knowledge of. I know the plan of Paul Oga is in communication with the Police Department and other parts of the city, saying, okay, is there places we know that the homeless are living at, habitating? Is it besides the legal ones? How bad is the, how bad is the condition? And that's, we have no knowledge of that. So, and this is an issue, because, you know, we can, we can change the law, but how, what do you expect to happen here when we do?
Member Bain?
I was wondering if you might not want to send it right on to the Planning Commission, because the zoning changes would start with them, and perhaps they would have a better understanding at this point with the planners' input. I'm not sure that you would want to necessarily proceed exactly as was requested earlier, but, you know, maybe changing an R1 zone, I don't know.
Well, I was just thinking it would best be determined in a committee meeting of council. What action to take and what.
To recommend.
To recommend, and literally what sympathies lie, and what members of council are willing to do, because we can follow a very long process, and with no indication from the number of members of council, know if it's going to have the support when it gets all the way back, because that is a very laborious process.
Well, then if we're going to do that, I would recommend that we start with the history of the property and all the zones.
Oh, I agree.
Just so we have some clear understanding of why, in this case, it happened.
That's all I have.
Okay. Let's go around the table in that direction. Kathy Heck, City Auditor.
I do have one announcement. It has to do with the food drive for Athens City, sponsored by my office, second year in a row. Member Gosny suggested that I announce it. Tonight at the meeting, it was in the paper about a week ago, since then, an article has been in there, but the Salvation Army, I think everybody's pretty clear that donations are down for everybody, and they are really in desperate need of food, and we are doing this food drive through the end of the week, and the places that people, and this would be for anybody, not just city employees, people can drop off food at the main entrance of City Hall in my office, at the Code Office on Curran, in the community center, the Columbus Road Fire Station, and at the service garage on West State Street, and we would appreciate any donations from anybody. Thanks.
We really encourage everyone to do that. City Treasurer, Mary Ann McClure.
Thanks, Bill. I am submitting the July, August, and September bank reconciliations. They're all stapled together, and the third section, it's actually the last sheet of each one, shows, shows the different accounts and their balances, as well as what's invested in the CDs. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I would appreciate acceptance of these reports tonight.
Do you need an ordinance also for?
A motion, to accept the reports.
Can we have an ordinance or a motion to accept the reports?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the treasurer's report from the third quarter reconciliation.
Motion and second, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The reports have been accepted. Anything else, Mary Ann? Thank you. Law Director, Patrick Lang.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
On to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 12808, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to extend the current contract to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Convention and Visitors' Bureau. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 12808. This ordinance extends a contract that we've had with the Convention and Visitors Bureau for several years. We are asking them to encourage tourist activities, visitor activities, visitors, invite visitors to our city, and they are a county organization also, to the county. And this contract is funded by the city's share of a hotel motel lodging tax, and we have agreed in the past to pass on 35 percent of those collections to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Last year, that amounted to about $85,000.
Further discussion. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12808?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 13008, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2009. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Boy, for one of the shortest sentences, it has the biggest financial price tag attached to it of any. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 13008. This is indeed the appropriation ordinance, which lists the amounts that we anticipate, the expenses we anticipate throughout the year. Members of council have a copy of that. It shows costs for personnel throughout the city, supplies and services, debt service, et cetera, and in the general fund, that total is $11,546,864. The additional activities that occur in the city add another $18 million to our costs for a total of $30,323,780 for 2009 budget for the city of Athens.
Is there further discussion or comment? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 13008?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. I'm always amazed, Lyia Carrin spent weeks discussing it and spent $30 million and have no comments.
I haven't spent it yet.
Authorize it. Ordinance 13108, an ordinance authorizing staffing levels, a non-union pay scale and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31, '09, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency. Introduced again by Finance and Personnel Committee. Member Bain, are you speaking to this one?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 13108.
Second.
This ordinance is, has a few revisions. We have not given increases, we have some increases that are in place for, until June, until we know what our carry forward is, but with 131, 132, there are two things that we have done, one of them is, we've made a change in the insurance, and I think come up with a better carrier, and that's the first item, and we're going to have actually packets circulated to our employees, and getting real professional with that. And then the second thing we do is, we've tightened up the part-time staffing, intermittent, and so on and so forth. We took people that were on unusual contracts and put them in the budget, and so later on, when Jim talks about why we were over in a certain line, that probably won't be happening again, because we've tightened up definitions on that. And so those are two of the features of this, and it took a while, but here we are.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 131? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 13208, an ordinance adopting a fringe benefit package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens, and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith. Member Sands?
I think Member Bain spoke to this before.
Member Bain?
I move adoption of 13208.
Second.
Okay, I mentioned the items that were primarily in this particular ordinance, the two again being the changes in insurance and part-time staffing, and the tightening up of definitions, and that's what's going on there.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 13208 has been adopted. Ordinance 13308, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Soil and Water Conservation District. Member Gosny?
I move adoption of ordinance 13308.
Second.
This is a renewal of a yearly contract we have with the Soil and Water Conservation District. It authorizes the mayor to enter into contract with them. It authorizes an expenditure of up to $12,000, which is, it will be $12,000, as I understand. And the third one, just as a standard section that's in most of our ordinances, that says it will be in place right as soon as possible. So this Soil and Water Conservation District, they do training, city employees, and they also, they publish data on a soil in the area, and a lot of conservation education work in the area as well.
Sir, I'm sorry, Member Sands?
Citizens of the city of Athens can also call on them for evaluation of soil conditions at their homes, for whatever reason that might be necessary.
Yes.
There's no charge.
Yeah, no charge.
To the citizens for that.
Yes.
And I would just add, if anyone hasn't been to their banquet when they have that each year, it's really wonderful to see the educational work that they're doing in area schools on conservation issues, and some of the awards that are presented, you get a chance to hear about some of the great work of many of our neighbors, and one of the award recipients was Andy Stone's father this past, this year. So it's a really neat event, I'd encourage people to attend.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 133?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Now on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 13408, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I would like at this time to move that we consider ordinance 13408 under suspension of the rules. This ordinance appropriates some funds to allow two departments, City Council and the Streets Department, to meet their payroll obligations for the end of the year.
Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 13408.
Second.
Again, this allows the Streets Department, it appropriates to the Streets Department $45,000, and to council, $7,000, and these appropriations are to cover salary expenses until the end of the year, which is fast approaching.
Further discussion?
The auditor has something.
Yes. Auditor Heck?
This might not be necessary, but I just want to point out that the $45,000 might seem a little bit high, but the Street Department has a salary budget of over $1.1 million. So for them to have this shortfall at the end of the year isn't really that out of line.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 134?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 13508, an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd also like to consider, move to consider ordinance 13508 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This is an ordinance dealing with the insurance consideration that Member Bain talked about in our non-union ordinance, and this is an important element of that insurance program.
Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended on ordinance 13508.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 13508.
Second.
This ordinance allows for an expenditure of $301,535 to cover our stop-loss insurance for the year 2009. Stop-loss insurance is reinsurance, remember, we are a self-insured organization, and stop-loss comes in when a particular claim goes over a certain amount. As I recall, in the past, that amount was $100,000. This new contract that we would like to approve tonight, the stop-loss begins at $75,000, so the city is losing some of that. So the city is losing some of that responsibility. That's good for us. Also, for the first time, we will be offering, we will be covering a two-million-dollar lifetime premium maximum for our, each employee and families who are covered by this. Prior to that, it was a one-million-dollar lifetime. So these are important additions to our insurance program that we're offering. Premium rises from ten dollars and seventy cents to only eleven dollars per covered individual. So it's a reasonable raise for the increase in coverage that we're getting.
Is there further discussion? See, we're up to adoption. All those in favor of adoption of Ordinance 13508?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Now on to a one reading resolution.
I just, I had been asked to make further motion.
Make a?
Make a motion, okay. Mr. President, I would like to move to say that City Council, having passed the resolution asking for a hiring freeze, we, I would move to support the continuing, the filling of the secretary's position in the Streets Department.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion on the motion?
This, this position is empty at the present time, and we have asked department heads to justify that, and the, this is a one, a single-person secretary, and we believe that it is necessary in that department.
Is this a request for a one-reading resolution, I guess? Is that what's being requested here?
I thought it was just a-
It's a motion, as I'm interpreting it, it's a motion in support of a resolution.
A motion in support of a resolution.
Which I would say has no power whatsoever.
I would agree with that, but, okay.
And if Council would choose to go ahead and pass it, I think it would kind of give a sense of counsel to the administration if they choose to do it, but I would be careful to think that it really has any authority.
As did our resolution.
As did our resolution.
Have no authority.
Unless we choose to defund a position.
And so-
Unless we choose to defund a position.
I'm sorry. I maybe should have started with a motion to express this sense of counsel.
And I guess that's about what we're doing here. Okay? Is there further discussion on the motion before us?
No. I'm sorry.
All those in favor of the motion is stated.
Aye.
Was there a question over there?
Did I miss something? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say that if Council's being asked to evaluate the different jobs that are being filled in the city, I didn't find out about this until just now. I don't know about the rest of Council, but I can't vote yes, that I think we should fill this, if I don't have any information on it.
We would like to have a more systematic approach to this, but we've only just started.
And I know, we're just starting this process.
And we may be doing this for several years, so bear with us.
Is there other discussion or comments to be made? Yes.
Is my understanding that if the administration chooses to fill this position, we're okay with it? Is that okay?
That's what we're saying.
Okay. Other comments? All those in favor of the motion is stated?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six one.
Six one?
Yeah. On to a fun resolution. One that I enjoy. Resolution 1108, a resolution expressing the appreciation of the City of Athens, Ohio, Debbie Phillips for her public service. And I am going to read this resolution in its entirety. This is introduced by all members of Council. Whereas Debbie Phillips was elected to serve as Fourth Ward Representative in January 2004, and whereas Debbie Phillips has been a hard-working, knowledgeable, studious Council member with an ability to zero in on key points during lengthy legislative matters, and whereas Debbie Phillips spearheaded the passage and implementation of the city's site plan review, and whereas Debbie Phillips moved the Comprehensive Plan into the implementation stage by establishing the Comprehensive Plan Review Advisory Commission, and whereas Debbie Phillips moved the Disabilities Commission from an IED to an operational entity, and whereas Debbie Phillips has added Pauline as an ex-officio member of Council voted most photogenic. Pauline is her daughter. Anne, who has visited us on numerous occasions, and whereas this Council wishes her well in her newly-elected position as our state representative. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section 1, the City of Athens does hereby express its appreciation to Debbie Phillips for her faithful and distinguished service to the city as a member of Athens City Council. Section 2, the Clerk of Council is hereby directed to present a certified copy of this resolution to Debbie Phillips. Debbie, thank you so much. On behalf of the city, the Fourth Ward, and this Council for the hard work that you have done, I don't know anybody else that has worked harder on the more detail or possibly Member Bain, but I doubt it.
No.
On the very kind of things that most, ah, when I finish, then they can move. On the kind of things that most people don't like to do, and it's tedious and boring and difficult and takes a lot of work, and you've served in that role so well, and we are going to miss you. I desperately need a good replacement on the Planning and Development Committee because that is so difficult, and you've done a great job, and a harder-working member of Council I've never seen. So thank you for the time that you've been here. Now I'll accept a motion to, to adopt. Did we have that?
I move that we adopt Resolution R 1108.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we need to suspend the rules? This is a one reading. Is there further discussion on Resolution 1108? Mayor Wile, we should let members of Council say things first, though. Is there anyone else on Council wishing to speak to this? Member Gosny?
Just wish I had more than a year to learn from you. We'll miss you on Council. Great to do.
Member Nysley?
You've been a real model for us, and we'll continue to watch you in the State House.
Anyone else? Yes. Member Butler?
Thank you again for your hard work, and I wish you best of luck with the state.
We need it.
Member Coon?
I wish you well, Debbie, and we'll really miss you.
You have no idea. Mayor Wile?
Thanks for working with me. I was, had a great time serving with you on Council, and I say we will miss you. Good luck on the next job.
Lord Director Lang?
Thank you. Debbie, I know that a lot of people in this room feel the same way that I do when I say that I've been proud to support you, and proud to call you a friend, and, but don't think for a second that means that I'll have any hesitation about calling you at any hour of day or night, that there is anything that you can do to help us down here in Athens, and we're just so pleased and proud, and congratulations.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I have learned so much from all of you. I've really enjoyed working with everyone in the administration and on Council and the citizens here in our community. I think it's obvious that we have a lot of people who care very deeply about Athens and about southeastern Ohio, and I've learned and grown a lot being able to work with all of you, and I know that we're gonna continue working together to strengthen our community here in southeastern Ohio, and most of you have my cell phone number, so please do, you know, call me anytime, and-
We're gonna give it out.
Yeah, so we've got a lot of work still to do together, so I hope that we'll see each other a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, and you will be receiving a more physical sign of our appreciation shortly, that the Clerk of Council is taken care of.
Thank you.
Announcements and other business.
Did you vote?
Oh, we need to vote. It might not pass. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Those opposed? You squeak through. Congratulations. And, you know, under announcements and other business, Member Bain, I think filling some pangs of old Lang's line today, and wanted to take a few moments to go over what have we accomplished in this year, and I think when we occasionally look forward and see all the difficult times ahead with budgets and fundings and other things, that it is occasionally a nice idea to stop and take a look back and see what did we pull together. Member Bain?
Well, I thought maybe people could give their own input, like Alahu and wellhead protection upgrade, I mean, really important material there. The Comprehensive Plan Committee and the Planner, a new and improved bus contract, a balanced budget without layoffs with some belt tightening, pedestrian and bicycle changes, improvements in some people's minds, bridge and roundabout construction plans. We saved three hundred thousand to the fire truck, and perhaps, you know, just thirty percent, but still, it's there. The sewer fund is balanced, and I had, Kathy didn't have to say, the sewer fund is in trouble. Let's see, what else? Park and the Street is underway. Granville Mary Street, total rebuild remodeling, working. Bike path completion, the pedestrian crossing also controversial at the West Green and Porter Hall. Those are some of the things that we can say we've done this year. Anybody have anything to add that I've missed?
Member Sands?
I think providing the new insurance coverage for our employees is a large plus because it, for the first time, offers the preventive medicine, doctors' visits, and especially doctors' visits for children who are covered under this, fully covered for the first time that we've been able to do that.
Well, baby.
Well, baby care. We're really happy about that. I totally forgot it, though. Anybody else? Think about it. You may need it in a few months.
Okay. Well, I don't know that there are any other planned meetings between now and the end of the year, although occasionally it happens if there is something that comes up that needs emergency funding. You may have a policeman show up at your front door to bring you to the city hall, but we don't expect that to happen. That's been threatened in the past. I've never really seen it happen, fortunately. Are there any other announcements anyone would like to share? I know we have some people that have waited through a lot of stuff tonight to speak before us tonight, and the next item on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered on tonight's agenda. So if there is anyone wishing to speak before Council tonight, now is the time. Yes, I will. We would ask that you come up to the podium, and we need your name and address for our records, because the rules of Council provide for that, and you're welcome to speak. We're up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Diane Chakavi, and I live on 2 Roosevelt Drive. We'd like to thank the members of the Athens City Council for the opportunity to speak tonight. We three who have come together this evening would each like to speak a few minutes about our greatest concerns concerning the planned new communication tower on Roosevelt Drive. We all, we three, all assume that, as in others, as others in Athens City, that a modern fire and police communication system to serve our community is a wonderful idea, and we look forward to having one. We three on Roosevelt Drive suddenly just learned about one of the sites for the system when preparations began near our homes. Some people understandably viewed this as a replacement tower. However, we learned that it both replaces some functions of the existing tower and is different from the existing tower in several important ways. The planned tower is an entirely new construction with a new base foundation. The existing tower is a hundred feet, and the planned tower is a hundred and fifty feet. The planned tower would have blinking strobe lights on twenty-four hours a day. The planned tower would require large guy wires that would stretch all the way down to Highland Park and require cutting down mature trees. The City of Athens from Court Street would have a huge lit tower on our most prominent hill, visible from State Street and the wider Hocking Valley. The planned tower would place homes and part of Highland Park within its fall zone. Mayor Wile has considered some of our questions and answered some of them, but we have many other unresolved questions that concern health, safety, view shed, light pollution, and scenic impact. We find it hard to understand how a project of this magnitude has come to fruition without little publicity and without a public discussion. We wonder what precedents are being set, both in terms of policy and opportunity for citizen involvement. These are major values in a democratic society. We ask that construction of this project be suspended until, first, there has been an environmental, health, and safety assessment that addresses all of these concerns, and second, that a public forum be held that allows Athens residents to collectively express their views. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Linda Wick, and I live at 1 Roosevelt Drive. I'm here also to voice our concerns regarding the erection of the communications tower on Roosevelt Drive. In conjunction, in conjunction with the concerns that my colleagues and neighbors mentioned, I have many questions. Why was this location chosen for the new tower? Why must it be located in a purely residential area? Is it possible to place this tower in a less populated locale in or near the city? Are there other locations the city may have previously examined which would suffice and which would have less negative effect on Athens and its citizens? Given the large cost of the tower to both conserve city expense and preserve aesthetic values, could a pre-existing structure be used as a base for the tower or converted for this purpose? Given the status of the current new installation, what sort of precedent is being set regarding the erection of other towers within the city limits in the future? What effect will this tower have on property values in our neighborhood? In our research, it has been difficult to find standards regarding locating a tower of this type within a densely populated residential area because they're not normally located there. I find it hard to believe that an effective communication system requires that this tower must be located on Roosevelt Drive. Surely, there's an alternative solution? I'm asking with my colleagues that this project be suspended until all of these issues are addressed in a public forum. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Weary, and I live at 6 Roosevelt Drive, and I am also very concerned about the proposed a hundred and fifty-foot communications tower. The health and safety guidelines that we have found recommend that all towers be seven hundred and fifty feet from any residential structure, regardless of zoning, for the health and safety of the public. The fall zone recommendations are a hundred and ten percent the height of the tower to protect from falling ice, falling equipment, or a falling tower. Homes, the park, playground, and street are all within the fall zone of this tower. This is a serious liability issue for the city. We are concerned, while the tower is currently being presented as point-to-point communication, could other omnidirectional applications be piggybacked on or added after the tower is erected? This is a huge issue, but I will just make a statement, that it is not recommended in any study that we have found that human beings reside within a five-hundred-foot radius of an electromagnetic field. We are asking that this project be suspended until all of these issues have been addressed. And the opportunity to replace this tower only comes about every twenty years. This is a great opportunity for us to do it right this time. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to express our concerns.
Folks, thank you for speaking before Council. It is not customary that we do enter into a discussion when, during this item on our agenda, simply because we do not turn a regular- agenda, simply because we do not turn a regular session of council into a committee meeting. And it is my understanding that this was discussed at three different committee meetings before three different readings. If there are members of council or members of the administration that would like to speak to any of the comments you've made, they're welcome to, but it is not always necessary. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, and.
We will have a meeting.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I don't, I'm not ready to say when, but I think we will have a meeting in January if they, as requested.
Okay.
Early January.
There will be a meeting, it sounds like a committee meeting for this.
Work session.
A work session or a committee meeting, whatever we wish to call it, that will be scheduled in January where it can be discussed further.
Ron can comment.
Okay?
Mayor, please.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, is there anyone else that wishes to speak before council? Yes, sir. Again, your name and address.
I won't repeat the arguments that were so articulately made by my neighbors and friends, but I'm Felix Galliano, I live at 11 Roosevelt Drive, and I also own the property at 225 Highland, which is in the immediate vicinity of the tower where my son and his family live. And I simply wanted to say that there are not just a few people in the neighborhood, but quite a number of us who are deeply concerned about this, and we hope you will give due attention to the remarks that we've made. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Wile.
I just was confirming with Ron there, we're probably gonna move ahead on building this tower. It's supposed to be built in, in April of this year. If you remember, there was discussion about licensing extra transmitters on that, which fell apart. The way I understand it, as it stands now, you cannot add any more transmitters onto it without a whole total redesign. The way it's structured is that you, you say how much you're gonna put on the tower, then you go and get a permit for the tower, and you can put on no more than that. The fact is that the study that you was generating, and when I was on council, was approved of our, with our phone system, all $600,000 total so far, was to improve our 16-year-old phone system within the city, to improve our communications. Most of the review that went down after that was of a technical nature, where we went around, if I understand, earlier in the year, probably went around looking at the various places where we could put towers, how, what we had in place at the time, which included the Roosevelt Tower. We are building another tower on, near current by the code ops as well, because the reach is such that you can't reach all the city points of it. The tower itself is, I don't know what the price of it is, is not 600,000, but this is just part of the package to make the communication system that works. This was decided on council in 2007.
Right?
Okay. Again, it's fallen quite far behind because of the, because the conditions of trying, trying to accommodate other businesses, other people, and just concerns to make sure it was done properly. So, I, again, I think we're gonna still, still go ahead with this, just because of our contract, and it would cost us more otherwise.
Without a ordinance defunding it, I think you have a requirement to.
It's a contract.
Yeah. I would think that's where we are at this point, as I understand the process. I don't think the administration has any option but to go forward with it unless action of council would stop it, and.
Well, I think it's, Mr. President, I think it's new for almost everyone sitting up here.
Yeah.
And improving the phone system, and, but I do think that I would like to hear about the 110% fall zone. I think maybe Ron could talk to the people and maybe assure them a bit, and I think maybe in, not now, but it may be in very early January.
Well, all the plans that we submitted for the engineering were state-approved plans, and I'm sure they looked at where the tower's located, property lines, guy wire length, so.
Who, which agency approves them?
State of Ohio.
No, no, I know, but which agency in the state?
Industrial compliance, I think, I see.
Okay. So, we could have, you know, that would be, it's always good to have people who live in vicinity of things have a chance to talk, so I'd like, on maybe the first Wednesday after we're back, have that meeting here, if you guys could come.
Mayor Wile.
I would also point out, if you remember, the Comprehensive Plan did talk at one point about legislation, putting legislation place for towers. It's never been anything, nothing's ever moved forward on that. It's been brought up before to council, and the reason why I mention that is because this is, this would be something to look at in the, in the future, but as I say, there is no legislation or, we, in place right now.
Right. And I do know that part of the need that pointed out so graphically to us on why we needed to upgrade our communication system for police, fire, street, and others, was when we had the death of one of our employees that happened at a place that was not served by any kind of communications, and the people that were trying to get emergency vehicles to him had to run across several acres, to say the least, to find a place that the, their cell phones would work. So, part of the reason that we did go forward with some of this was to ensure that we did have complete citywide communications. So, anyway, not to turn this into a committee meeting, there have been several, I do understand when you don't see it in the paper, read exactly what we are doing, but that is why we have three readings. It's why we broadcast and have it on television, it's why we have the press here covering what we do, hopefully so that people do hear and see what's going on with what we are doing, and that they do offer their input and communication at the time that these things are taking place. I guess, I'm sure you're frustrated that you were not aware of it at that time, and I guess we are somewhat frustrated to know that we, we set up rules to have three readings of ordinances and discussions in committees and those kind of things, and always at third reading or when something is happening is when citizens get angry at us over what we're doing. So, I hope you can recognize that it's kind of a two-way thing. Is there any other comments? Member Gosney.
Yeah, just to be clear, we, council, this was approved, the communication system before, many of us were on council here, but the tower was never part of the communication system in terms of council approving it. We didn't know what it was gonna look like. I'm sure the mayor didn't know what it was gonna look like.
It was discussed.
It was always in the, in the spec to the, to the contract.
The, the size and.
I don't think so.
Size and location.
In terms of what council approved, we, as our ordinance?
Yeah.
Because we approved the money for the contract.
Well, I don't know that we ever but approve, oh, it's gonna be this size, and it's gonna be of this number, and it's gonna be this model number, and it's gonna be.
And that's my point.
No, but the size was discussed.
And, well, I, I think this would, if it was, I wasn't aware of it, and I, I see that it wasn't true for everyone as well. I think it would be a mistake to continue with this project without having a public hearing for the residents that live in that part of town.
We could do it Monday, right after council, that first Monday, the, what is it, the second, or? Yeah, January 3rd, 4th.
Okay.
Let's do it then. Let's plan it right after close council and have a committee meeting of the whole.
Okay. Okay. Thank you again for coming. The next item on our agenda is an executive session. And I told you I'd get you out of here at 8:30, and it's 8:28. How about that? An executive session literally is when council goes behind closed doors to cover collective bargaining this evening, discussion, and we will have a little, if I could ask you to let, here with this moment.
Let's have our votes.
Roll call.
Aye.
Okay.
Who do you want present?
The mayor, the auditor, the Service Safety Director, and the law director.
What's that, Bojinka's ordinance?